Oo na ka? Dina, dina. Paano ni Jen ko na na pwede? Ah, doon din. Oo lang ka? Okay. Let's start. Seventy six regular session. Naranibakrana music. Of the twentieth city council is now called to order. Invocation by honorable Councilor Romeo Calizo, Palom Benzini, Lupang Kiran, and Kageyan Dioro Arch. Please rise.
Let us pray in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Gracious and merciful one, as we gather here today to undertake responsibilities entrusted to us by our community, we seek your guidance and wisdom. Grant us courage of mind, empathy for all those we serve, and the courage to make decisions that benefit the common good. May our deliberations remark with respect, understanding, and commitment to justice. Help us to listen by heart to each other, to engage in constructive dialogue, and to find common ground, even in our differences. Bless our efforts to promote harmony and equality for our city. May our decisions reflect your will and contribute to the well-being of our Kageyanans. Grant us strength to face the challenges ahead, humility to admit when we are wrong, and perseverance to continue striving for a better future. All these, O Lord, we ask in your name. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Please visitant. Mister Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable City Vice Mayor Dosilipio Rodriguez, Presiding Officer. For the first district councilors, Honorable La Capito and Evangelito Jiswan, Honorable Roger Abadai, Honorable JR Pasqual, Honorable Amy Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo D. Calizo, Honorable George S. Croking, Honorable Jose Pepe S. Abu Junior, Honorable Malbert I. Espersia. For the second district councilors, Honorable Imuna Yasek B. Manu, Honorable Maria Lores Escheani, Honorable Julie Mercedes Elmanapa, Honorable James K. Juret Resecat, Honorable Ayam Mark Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanas, Honorable Christian Prostico E. Pachas, Honorable Jose Chiebantahas Napak. For the execution members, Honorable Yanlap S. Minti, Mga Baratepresen, and Honorable Ken Jatdisakala City Escape Association President. There is corollary, Madam President.
Corollary. Corollary sealed by certified. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, councilors. Good afternoon. Our friends, our guests who are here today, our friends from the media, and we have visitors today, students of master's degree in public administration, uh, at the near di Kageyan School. Welcome and good afternoon. Attorney, please, please stand up. I would like to, uh... Ah, okay. Welcome, and thank you. So today, uh, let us sing a birthday song to Attorney James Judith. Tignan ko mga mata. Anyway, uh, dina ilagay ako microphone. Yes, anak na na. Yes. Okay. Uh, who will lead the singing of the birthday song? Uh, Counselor? Counselor Gurly Malapa. Ikaw kedyapon ako napilian. Okay, okay. Please stand up.
Hi.
Please lumutyo't pantagan.
Chok lang. Happy birthday, boy. Happy birthday, Counselor James Astang Mopay Judith. Let us sing a happy birthday song. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday, happy birthday to you. How old are you?
Okay, thank you very much. Please sit down. Anyway, uh, majority floor leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanas, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer, our honorable Vice Mayor Evangelito Rodriguez. Members of this august party, city council, again your guest, special guest that we have here today. The gallery. People of Kageyan Euro are watching us in their respective, uh, social media platforms. Good afternoon. Happy birthday, first your gift, Judith. Nakata si, first your gali, prumprum, patikid.
Kung nakaraan, masan siya, tanawa.
This is a sign of love. It would be a sign of bravery. Uh... May I move for, to, 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 to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous reception of this council on regular paper two twenty twenty four, and consider it a furnishing of Kapis de Oro as reading itself.
In the second objection, I hear none motion to see by Carri.
But move to approve the minutes on second and final reading.
Second objection, I hear none motion to see by Carri.
On the special report question, there is no member of this council who is interested in, uh, rendering a special report. So we proceed to the business today, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, yes. Let's proceed.
Uh, I...
Yeah, guys.
Yes, on a special session of paper eight twenty twenty four, move for its approval, Madam Chair.
Any second objection, I hear none motion to see by Carri.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection, I hear none motion to see by Carri.
Item, uh, one. Proposed Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Six Nine Two, Confirming the Appointment of Engineer Joel V. Mumungan as City Government Department Head Two of the Office of City Engineer with all the rights and privileges, according to thereto. Move for its approval, Madam Chair.
Any second. Comment. Yeah, actually, Engineer Joel is here. Yeah. Uh, so we will approve first? We will approve first? Ah, okay. So, uh, Counselor Ayam Mark Nakaya, you have the floor.
Okay. May move to special address to allow non-members to speak fully, so we can.
Okay. Any second objection, I hear none motion to see by Carri.
May request Engineer Mumungan to...
Engineer, Engineer Joel Mumungan?
The questions running for members.
Okay, okay.
And before the questions, he can introduce himself as a floor leader, just like any other department manager who has been appointed by the...
Okay. Today, you can have the, uh, the... Asaman siya din. Yeah, okay. So welcome, Attorney, Engineer Joel.
Sir Vice Mayor, Honorable La Capito Rodriguez, Presiding Officer. Members of this august party, uh, mayong haboy sa tral.
Mayong haboy.
Uh, una sa tral, Magno, uh, salamat ko, una sa kaitasan. I know, uh, hindi ko man na lang matagal ang bigayon na makapunta ng posisyon. So, uh, thank you, Lord. Second, uh, Mayor Clarex, uh, fantastic, you know, uh, salamat kasi ang pagsalin. Uh, I understand this department is, uh, huge, not a company, a department, but, uh, I will try my best, sa'ko mahinong, alin mo manag. Third, of course, uh, this august party allows, uh, is, allow me, uh, na makonfirm ko ano'y, uh, uh, posisyon, uh, naghandle ngayon sa pagodan. Uh, actually, I started my, uh, uh, employment here in the city government since nineteen ninety five, at the City Engineers Office. Now, uh, that was the time of Mayor Manu. From then, uh, I started my job as a an engineer until now. Uh, handling as a project engineer of, uh, different projects here in the city hall. This one is my project, a flyover. What else? The holding mile of, uh, uh, mayor Rob. Different, uh, road vehicles, uh, drainage, uh, road completely, buildings. Uh... That tells how my, uh, experience of Madam Chair. So, uh, asking, uh, mayo, uh, po bang, uh, this august party will allow me? Again, uh, dagan kayo, salamat, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Engineer Joel Mumungan. Yes, Counselor, uh, Ayam Mark Nakaya, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Okay, well, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh... A city engineer position, Madam Presiding Officer, is one, uh, position that is, uh, huge, really gigantic, uh, role because, uh, he does not only function as a local operator, just like any other department, except the city treasurer, the city registrar, the city public duty official, and the city manager. All of these, uh, positions have a role beyond the, the local, uh, administration of roles and responsibilities. For a city engineer, let me that there are students of Asamiya University, particularly public administration. Because, uh, as a student of public administration, I would like to share any part that a city engineer is an extension of the DPDWH Secretary. Again, the city engineer is a, is an extension officer, just like the city treasurer, an extension of the Treasury Department, uh, the national government. The building official is also an extension of the DPDWH Secretary. The city registrar is an extension of the, uh, the Philippine Statistics Department Office. And, uh, because of the role, Madam Presiding Officer, it is not only limited to the planning of, uh, in, in, in local scope of the development plan of the executive of the local sanggulian, but he has to extend his, uh, planning approach and behavior to participate in the, uh, regional and the national direction on infrastructure projects. It is necessary that, uh, he has to, uh, participate so that there would be connections beyond between the national government's programs of infra and the local government, Madam Presiding Officer. Uh, I, 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 I just want, I just would like to share, maybe perhaps, uh, the city engineer, Engineer Mamungan. I know him personally from, from where he started during the previous administration to the higher position that he has held and up to this point that he has been appointed by the city mayor, Madam Presiding Officer. I have no question of his credibility and authority once given the position that he can handle his job well. But, uh, I would like to be cautious on matters of the infra development programs, not projects, but programs, uh, that is, uh, uh, beyond identifiable, uh, small scope, uh, activities of, uh, the city government of infra, but entire development or perhaps in the upland barangays or communities. In the future development, in the expansion of our shoreline, in, uh, the connection of our roads, uh, in the network for the roofing system that we intend to add for the master plan on the transportation, and, uh, all other vertical and horizontal projects, Madam Presiding Officer. In other words, what I, what I am trying to, uh, provide as an input, Madam Presiding Officer, perhaps, the, our city engineer, in a few minutes, will be able to check the DPDWH Regional Office as to the programs, not only for Kageyan Dioro, but the connectivity that would, uh, allow the participation of the city government in highways development, in infra development, and for the city of Kageyan Dioro, maybe perhaps, the newly approved, uh, transportation master plan, he can also assess where all this infra should be included and how these projects will be implemented if it is tied for ten years. He should initiate on his own as the officer in charge of infrastructure that within the timeframe, all these projects in the plan that we have, uh, drafted, Madam Presiding Officer, he should introduce to the local finance committee year after year the seating of money to fund the development projects for, for the master plan or all other projects that the city government require for the city council required in the, in the enactments of the ordinances that we have approved, Madam Presiding Officer. Uh, he may answer that in the committee level, and we hope that we can also be furnished of, uh, what how his office can do uh, to assist in, in the development plan for the city of Kageyan Dioro and for the regional as well, Madam Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ayam Mark Nakaya. Yes, uh, okay, well taken, uh, Engineer Joel. Yes, Attorney, uh, Counselor Attorney James Judith, you have the floor.
Salamat, Madam Chair, sa'ko pong mga minahon magkaubat sa councilo sa inyong birthday greetings. Kina nila, uh, Engineer Mumungan, congratulations dahi sa inyong promotion o ang akong pagdayok sa isanitan, kasi mayon, uh, inyong city engineer sa atong tagbayan tungod ni sa inyong, uh, kabangta agad o kasinatkiyan. Ang ako lang, uh, engineer, dahi, butong tan ako himuan o special report, pero kenaan mo ka. Ayaw lang magtapos ibong mga tawuran kung pwede ka rin na napisiget. Isa naman na niya papuntahan na, kahi, na akin ako doon kung madupahin niya. Kahi, special report pa mo aking pagposeso. So ani na lang ka na. Matan na ako engineer, boss, first, pre dito, patong. Matan na lang ko kung unsa na status or update. Sa kanilang gil na akin din. Meron ka na mo kitiyapan sa inyong mga tupusan sa inyong buhatan? Katungit ang sub building, uh, building, party building, building sa mahimong extension sa atong dini, sa atong kasabkakan na cityon. Meron ka ng na, engineer? Matan na ako matan na ko, kunsa nabasa na ba siya taloy na.
Una siya sa likod, sa legislative?
Yes, yes, yes.
Likod sa legislative building?
Matan na ko. Ay, arrebited building. Meron ko sumay building sa atong cityon. Matan na na ko engineer kung, uh, kilo na ba dahak na naindursa na ba ko sa inyong buhatan kung, kung galing, naindursa na ba galing sa inyong buhatan, nasan na taan ko, meron ko sa niya. Dagan salamat.
As of now, uh, wala po, wala, wala po kababasa ka na, you know, uh, sir, uh, wala po kabalog, uh, wala po ideya pa, uh, kala sa likod, may structure.
Yeah. Yes, yes, Counselor, Attorney James Judith.
May nanay dihimo na si architect ng Kabelis.
Ayan, uh...
Kala sa...
Yes, uh, actually, nagisturya na may nanay dihimo, ani, at, uh, kuha ni, uh, Architect Kabelis, but, uh, prior po sa paghimuan ng plano. Pag sa paghimunan niya sa plano, wala niya magisturya ano. Gali, wala po kabalogan sa details ng, ng project. But, uh, sila, uh, your honor, uh, I will try to coordinate with, uh, Architect Kabelis.
Okay, thank you very much. Any more questions? Huh? Okay. Majority floor leader, you have the floor. Uh, Counselor, uh, Gurly Malapa, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Congratulations, Engineer Mumungan. Uh, matagaan niin mo, uh, gift in the turn, pwede din mo ngayon? Kini, kini mo iskalitong delivered sa...
Elevators.
Totong elevator. Hindi, ano yun ang mga maayaw ayaw na.
Actually, uh, ina, ina pressure na po na kurang, na to tractor, ano? Magno, uh, within, uh, within the week, I think, uh, mag, remove na sila ani na to batangga, all this, uh, elevator, kenan, libat ko nga. Ano mo tayw winning bidder, ano actually? Uh, duginan, duginan sila bid, but, uh...
Okay. So, um, Engineer Joel, it's already, uh, approved yet, there's still, the lacking paper is still, uh, noticed to proceed. So it's been a while, the, the, we have already, the, the, the bidding had been done. So there is this winning bidder, now it's not yet, uh, what happened? Please check on that.
Yes, within the week, ma'am, uh, the contractor promised us, uh, to remove the whole, and start the, uh, remove the whole, uh, elevator and replacing with another one.
Okay, because you know, actually, it's very hard, even with the council going up and down, and the disables. Naru sila sa mo, they cannot go up to the different offices. I hope that can be, uh, updated, will be updated on that.
Within the week, ma'am.
Yes, thank you very much.
They start removing the...
We'll, we'll follow you up. Okay, okay. So anymore? Anymore? None? So, uh, majority floor leader, you have the floor, Attorney Edgar Cabanas.
May move to let this...
Yeah, this is a session issue.
Move to approve item number one, Madam Chair.
Any second. Objection? I hear none motion to see by Carri.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second objection, I hear none motion to see by Carri.
Uh, before we proceed, Madam Chair, presentation, quest, ending, quest of person, Madam Chair. So recognize is, uh, our, uh, young boy who honor city, city, Kapis de Oro by winning in this, uh, karatito to the minute above.
Yeah, is, uh, is, uh, Engineer Don? Congratulations, congratulations, Engineer Joel Mumungan.
Thank you, uh, majority board. Thank you, uh, this august party.
Okay, thank you very much, congratulations. Ami ko, apilas karatido. Okay, so let's proceed, majority floor leader.
May I request that this, uh, winning team of Kapis de Oro be recognized?
Yes, the winning team.
May any question or wanting to give us names and ask this, uh,
Okay.
team to come forward.
Okay, uh, Counselor Roger Abadai, you are recognized, and I hope you participate with them also.
Thank you very much, majority floor, and our Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Dosilipio Rodriguez, my distinguished colleagues in the twentieth city council, and I would like to, uh, present, uh, something honorable, we have presented earlier this morning during the flag raising, but for recognition and acknowledgement of the, uh, exemplary performance, dili lang is na around to the champion, but niyager, uh, open, every, uh, jaba, araw ng jaba, yeah, Kageyan dioro is representative majesty. So during March twenty three, twenty four, So during March twenty-three, twenty-four, eighth of September, Alaman Jaba, this karate team representing Cagayan di Oro, and Cagayan di Oro garnered as his first overall champion in committee, Españo, tournament, and second in Katta. As person, as person of Katta tournament. And here are the following karate castles, who achieved medal, gold, silver, and bronze. So please, in your name is called, please come forward, alright, and bring your, video your medal. Imono bago. Okay, Linton Andre Santos, there are four goals, junior in team committee, gold senior in individual Katta, gold in senior committee, gold in open weight category senior. Then, Charis James Santos, again, gold in junior team Katta, gold in junior team committee, gold in senior team Katta, silver individual Katta, silver in senior committee. Then, Randy Zili Oda, gold intermediate Katta, gold intermediate committee, gold advanced committee, and silver advanced Katta. Then, Martino Loren Sadap, gold individual Katta, gold individual committee, gold junior team Katta, gold senior team Katta, gold junior team committee, silver senior committee. Yel Lloyd Sangrador, gold individual Katta committee, gold senior individual committee, gold junior team committee, gold junior team Katta, gold senior team Katta, bronze individual advanced Katta. Eron De La Gaba, gold junior team Katta, silver individual Katta. Abigail Fernandez, gold individual committee, silver individual Katta. Maydila Palamini, bronze individual committee. Daylon Francis Palamini, gold individual Katta, bronze individual committee. Alex Q Paco, silver individual Katta, bronze individual committee. Kimberly Yamba, gold individual Katta, silver individual committee. Johan James Takoko, gold individual Katta. At this chapter, Madam Chair, my colleagues, I am passing on the proper time resolution, congratulations and committing this karate castles for their exemplary presentation during the Arawan Jaba Karate Tournament, proper time.
Okay, congratulations. Give them a round of applause.
Are you?
Who is the trainer? Who is the trainer? You?
One lang, uh, Neil Nanji.
Sample's a trainer?
I have nothing proper. Anyway.
Anyway, see you, let's proceed.
Okay, so can we have a photo?
Yes. This is one, five minutes recess.
Anito sa likod.
Have a picture.
Anggak five. Ay, dala. What's up, sir?
Pakingitiba sa karate.
Pakingitba sa karate, yeah.
Okay, session issue.
I will proceed to our item, item two, two. For two to six, we wish motion approval, Chair, please. For proposal approval, items two to six. Item two is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash six nine three, returning to Barangay Council, Barangay number fourteen, the city's ordinance number zero one, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of four million one thousand three hundred eight pesos ninety cents. Item three is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash six nine four, returning to Barangay Council, Barangay number fifteen, the city's ordinance number zero one, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of four million seven hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty pesos. Item four is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash six nine five, returning to Barangay Council, Barangay, the city's ordinance number zero zero one, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of twenty-four million eight hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred twenty-six pesos. Item five is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash six nine six, returning to Barangay Council, Barangay, the city's ordinance number twenty-six, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of thirty-nine million eight hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-seven pesos. Item six is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash six nine seven, returning to Barangay Council, Barangay, the city's ordinance number zero zero one, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of nineteen million four hundred forty-three thousand two hundred seventy-six pesos. With the information that city ordinances are operative in their entirety.
Madam Chair, may I request Counselor Alambev?
Counselor Alambev, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, may ako, may ako sa tanan, happy birthday, sir. Attorney Jeff Shilling, proposal approval from one to six, I move for, everything is order, I move for the approval of resolution number two zero two four dash six nine two, two zero two four dash six nine three, two zero two four dash six nine four, two zero two four dash six nine five, two zero two four dash six nine six, two zero two four dash six nine seven.
Any second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Items seven to sixteen, we wish motion approval. Item seven is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash six nine eight, returning to Sanponia Kabataan, Barangay number ten, the city's resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash zero three, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of three hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred ninety pesos. Item eight is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash six nine nine, returning to Sanponia Kabataan, Barangay, the city's resolution number zero zero two, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of two million four hundred twenty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-three pesos. Item nine, proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash seven hundred, returning to Sanponia Kabataan, Barangay, the city's resolution number zero zero six, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of three million eight hundred seven thousand eight hundred nine pesos. Item ten is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash seven zero one, returning to Sanponia Kabataan, Barangay, the city's resolution number zero zero seven, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of four million two hundred five hundred sixty-six pesos. Item eleven is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash seven zero two, returning to Sanponia Kabataan, Barangay, the city's resolution number zero zero eight, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of two million eighty-five thousand seven hundred sixty-one pesos. Item twelve is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash seven zero three, returning to Sanponia Kabataan, Barangay, the city's resolution number zero zero three dash twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of five million seven hundred ninety-three thousand two hundred nine pesos. Item thirteen is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash seven zero four, returning to Sanponia Kabataan, Barangay, the city's resolution number zero seven, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of two million eight hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-one pesos. Item fourteen is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash seven zero five, returning to Sanponia Kabataan, Barangay, the city's resolution number zero zero eight, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of two million five hundred seventy-nine thousand six hundred thirty-five pesos. Item fifteen, proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash seven zero six, returning to Sanponia Kabataan, Barangay, the city's resolution number zero one zero, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of one million nine hundred forty-four thousand three hundred twenty-seven pesos and sixty cents. Item sixteen is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash seven oh seven, returning to Sanponia Kabataan, Barangay, the city's resolution number twenty-three, series of twenty twenty-four, covering annual budget for current year twenty-two with an estimated income of three million one hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred seventy-nine pesos. With the information that city resolutions are operative in their entirety.
Madam Chair, may I request Counselor Kenet Sakala?
Counselor Kenet Sakala, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and to the members of the City Council, and happy birthday to my idol, Counselor Tany James. Evening afternoon to the.
Subo ako ba?
So move for the approval of the proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash six nine eight to proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash seven zero seven.
Any second. Any objection? I, uh, Counselor Romeo Caliso, you're on the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Just a point of interest. I just want to know the reason why the approvals of the different barangays as well are not the same time. I just, I just, what would have been the reason?
There would be delay. Uh, probably, in my own experience, probably is the timely submission requirements.
That's exactly my point, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Is there no remedy to this, that all at the same time, the spirit of fairness for all those barangays? It's like, I don't know, but in my experience, I go to getting a member of the budget committee in the armed forces. The city will get all units in the armed forces will be provided the appropriate budget all at the same time. Uh, I don't know, is this dismanagement or? Because it's saying, some of the barangays do not know how to prepare the document. I think still, it's still, it's still the look out of the hierarchy of the.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is a very, very, very good observation. Actually, sometimes barangays, barangays do not submit right away. Or either they submit online, but then lacking ang mga requirements. Like for now, there is this approving, adapting annual barangay youth investment program, ABY IP, that is required before they will be approved in the plenary. Yeah, so I hope the barangays will help, of course, the kapital will have the kabataan because this is the only way that they can guide them so that they can also submit timely the required requirements for approval.
Yeah, that's exactly my point, Madam Chair, so that all the barangays will experience the same benefits that they ought to receive from the hierarchy of government. Then there must be a way of solving this, this, I consider it dismanagement.
Yeah, yeah, that's a very good observation. Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Romeo Caliso. Yes, Counselor, Majority Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, you're on the floor. Any second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item seventeen, first. Item seventeen is proposed resolution number twenty-two twenty-four dash seven zero eight, adapting the qualification standards for appointment to the early specified positions for Suanto Civil Service Commission in Parangay Central, number six, series of twenty twenty-three, which amends section thirty-four of the twenty-seventeen of universal rules on appointments and other relevant resource actions to with: A. City Government Department Head to City Management Information Systems Officer, item number one, salary grade twenty-six, under the City Management Information Systems Administration Department; B. City Government Assistant Department Head to Assistant Social Welfare and Development Officer, item number two, salary grade twenty-four, under the Office of the City Social Welfare and Development Officer; and C. City Government Assistant Department Head to Assistant City Veterinarian, item number two, salary grade twenty-four, under the Office of the City Veterinarian. May I request Counselor Yan Lambev?
Counselor Yan Lambev, you're recognized.
Everything is order, Madam Chair. I move to approve proposed resolution number two zero two four dash seven zero eight.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item eighteen, first. Item eighteen, A. Proposed Ordinance Number Twenty-two Twenty-four Dash Four One Six, authorizing honorable City Mayor Rando Iui, representing the City Government of Cagayan di Oro, to enter into an signed and memorandum of agreement with the Philippine Atmospheric Geophysical and Astronomical Services Administration, Pangasa DOST, represented by its Administrator Officer in Charge, Nathan Yel T. Servando, EHD, covering the establishment and the coastal weather monitoring station under the latter's VSAP end-to-end communication project under the terms and conditions indicated therein. Item eighteen, B. Proposed Ordinance Number Twenty-two Twenty-four Dash Four One Seven, confirming and ratifying the use of front agreement entered into by and between the City Government of Cagayan di Oro, represented by honorable City Mayor Rando Iui, and with Ms. Kinchi S. Dalman, the landowner, covering the use of the latter's property covered under certificate of title number E dash four six five zero for the installation of the coastal weather monitoring station under the VSAP end-to-end communication project of DOST Pangasa located at Zunto Punta, Barangay, Bonbonde City, with an area of six thousand five hundred fifty-four square meters for a period of ten years under the terms and conditions indicated therein.
Madam Chair, may I request Counselor Malay?
Counselor Roger Abadai, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Majority Leader. Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of the proposed ordinance number twenty-two twenty-four four one six and the proposed ordinance number twenty-two twenty-four dash four one seven.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second and final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item nineteen, proposed ordinance number twenty-two twenty-four. Item nineteen, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four four one A, authorizing honorable city mayor Rando Iui, representing the City Government of Caliandioro, to enter into an signed memorandum agreement with the Department of Health Center for Health Development, known as MTA, presented by directors of each of Henry, MD Gaski, Junior, MD UPH, APSM, SK, SK, CT, SK, covering the construction of the new Salsibon Social Health Center, located in barangays and symbol of the city, under the latter's Health Machining Enhancement Program. Under the terms and conditions stipulated, may I request Councilor Maria Lourdes Galle, if you recognize?
Councilor Lourdes Galle, you're recognized.
And move for the approval of proposed ordinance number two zero two four dash four one D.
Any second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading?
Second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item, uh, twenty, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four four ninety, authorizing honorable city mayor Rando Iui, representing the City Government of Caliandioro, to enter into an signed memorandum agreement with the Department of Armed Culture Region Health Office Ten, represented by regional executive director Karleen C. Oliado CPA, covering the presentation of the Balik Provincia Bagong Bagasa Program to Ginitan Plant Barbers Association, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. May I request Councilor Jay Ropasqual, if you recognize?
Councilor Jay Pasqual, you're recognized.
I am applauding, applauding, thank you, Councilor James. And, uh, Madam Chair, move to approve proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash four one.
Any second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading?
Any second, any objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item twenty-one, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four four twenty, authorizing honorable city mayor Rando Iui, representing the City Government of Caliandioro, to enter into an signed memorandum agreement with the Department of Armed Culture Region Health Office Ten, represented by regional executive director Karleen Oliado CPA, and developer, integrated social forestry farmers association, represented by chairman Christine Christine Bakto, covering the DA's grant of two units of multi crop drying pavement with UV plastic shed, ten heads breeding cattle, and eight modules ready to lay chickens to the best part, best part, as per chicken, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. May I request Councilor Ian Magna, if you recognize?
Councilor Ian Magna, you're recognized.
Move to approve.
Any second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading?
Second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item twenty-two, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four four two one, authorizing the city accountant to charge the amount of thirty-seven thousand to the item's special program project, mines management, other maintenance and operating expenses in the twenty twenty-four annual budget of the Office of the City Environment and Natural Resources Officer, for payment for the unpaid honorarium of the members of the City Mining Regulatory Board, technical working group, for the period of August twenty twenty-three to December twenty twenty-three. May I request Councilor Missis Malaba, early?
Councilor Gurli Malaba, you have the floor?
Good afternoon, I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash four two one.
Any second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading?
Any second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item fifty-three, third please.
Item fifty-three is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash four hundred twenty-two, authorizing the city accountant to charge the sum of one hundred seven thousand nine hundred ninety-nine pesos and eighty-two centavos to the item maintenance and other operating expenses. Other maintenance and operating expenses under the office of the city mayor in the twenty twenty-four annual budget to cover payment for the services rendered and other benefits of the herein specified job order included assigned at the GRBora General Hospital for the period of October one twenty twenty-three to December thirty-one twenty twenty-three, to wit, one Mister Jake N. Dagsaan, administrative in one, the corresponding amount of thirty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-nine thousand and ninety-four centavos. Mister Liberato I. Dusri is the third, administrative in one, corresponding amount of thirty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-nine thousand and ninety-four centavos. Mister Bernabi J. Hanginan, administrative in one, the corresponding amount of thirty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-nine thousand and ninety-four centavos.
Uh, may I request Councilor Yan Laubli, if you recognize?
Councilor Yan Laubli, you're recognized.
I move for the approval of, uh, proposed ordinance number two zero two four dash four.
Second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading?
Second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item twenty-four?
Item number twenty-four, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash four two three, appropriating the sum of four hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred seventy-three pesos and sixty-two centavos from the item personnel services salary savings of the various positions in the GRBora General Hospital in the twenty twenty-four annual budget to be made available for the payment of the salary differential, hazard pay, and other benefits for the period January one twenty twenty-three to December twenty twenty-three, due to a step increment of the herein personal, uh, cell hospital, as listed, Mister Madam presenting.
May I request Councilor Romeo, if you recognize?
Councilor Romeo Caliso, you're recognized.
I move to approve, uh, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four last four two three.
Any second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading?
Second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item twenty-five, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four four two four, appropriating the sum of fourteen thousand nine hundred twenty pesos and seventy centavos from the item personnel salary salary and wages savings, item number eight, of eighty-one, watchman two, for the period January one to thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, in the twenty twenty-four annual budget, to be made available for payment of the unclaimed year-end bonus, CY twenty twenty-three, Mister Eduardo I. Aluhazin, watchman two, under the Civil Security Unit Place, Investigation and Security Division of the City, of the Office of the City Mayor retired from public service, fifty October nine twenty twenty-three. May I request Councilor Yan Laubli, if you recognize?
Councilor Yan Laubli, you're recognized.
I move to approve, uh, the second ordinance, the twenty twenty-four dash four two five.
Any second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading?
Second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item, uh, twenty-six, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four four two five, granting one grade salary increase from uh, is G nine bar eight to is G ten A to Miss Marisa Dago, former meanwhile, one GRBora General Hospital, history, who currently retired from the government service, meeting March one twenty twenty-four, over seven to six to thirty, of the Public Council, meeting three zero five, among the private public workers, as for this court was appropriating the sum of seven thousand two hundred seventy-three pesos and sixty centavos from the item personnel services salary savings and the item number two, City Government Assistant Department Head Two of the GRBora General Hospital, history, for the period January one to three, twenty twenty-four, in the twenty twenty-four annual budget of the city hospital, to be made available for the payment of her three-month salary differential. May I, may I request Councilor Malaba, early, if you recognize?
Councilor Gurli Malaba, you're recognized.
Not kissing?
I was looking for the attachment, uh, so twenty-seven?
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six? I move for the, uh, approval of proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash four two five.
Second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading?
Second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item twenty-seven, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four four two six, authorizing the city accountant to charge the sum of nineteen thousand five hundred seventy-nine pesos and eighty-six centavos to the item maintenance and other operating expenses, other maintenance and operating expenses under the office of the city mayor in the twenty twenty-four annual budget to cover payment in unpaid salary for the period December one to thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, of Mister Christian Mark L. Manuel, engineering assistant, seven thousand three hundred sixty-three pesos and sixty-two centavos, and Mister Victor Yanson, administrated eight one, twelve thousand two hundred sixty-three pesos, twenty-five centavos. Both job order included, signed at the said office. May I request, request that Councilor Christian Rustico, if you recognize?
Councilor Christian Rustico, you have the floor? Not kissing again? Number twenty-seven?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, preparing my discussion later in proposed ordinance number twenty-nine.
Okay.
So I move proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash four two six.
Any second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading?
Second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item twenty-eight, proposed ordinance twenty twenty-four four seven, granting exemption for payment of the missing tax to the resident company, the Cultural Center of the Philippines, Philippine Ballet Theater for its concert show, Dog Music in Lucio, on April twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, at the Etrium Hall, Linkikais Center, City. May I request the Councilor George S. Gokey?
Councilor George Gokey, you have the floor?
Thank you very much, Vice President. I move to approve the proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash four two seven.
Any second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading?
Second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
For question, Madam Chair, may I move for the to include in our celebration today to items twenty-nine to thirty-five?
Any second objection, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item twenty-nine, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-four, series of seven zero nine, amending resolution for the eight nine five, thus, twenty twenty-four, entitled resolution, interposing objection to the application of Rio Verde Water for Constitution Inc., represented by Special Engineer Joffrey Papitan, to provide an end-to-end level three water supply for all barangays of Caliandioro City, which are either waterless or have not been adequately supplied by Caliandioro Water District, providing that this corporation will only charge its customers fifteen pesos per cubic meter for the first three years of its operations, and we increase the same to not more than sixteen pesos per cubic meter on the fourth year up to the fifteenth year of its operation, so as to delete the rate, the price provided, so as to delete, then, the price provided, that the same corporation will only charge in its customers fifteen pesos per cubic meter for the first three years of its operations, and we increase the same to not more than sixteen pesos per, per cubic meter on the fourth year of its after the fifteenth year of its operation. I remove for approval for this amended.
Any second, any comment? Okay. Uh, now, I'm applauding, I'm applauding, the councilor, uh, Rustico Achas, you have the floor?
Uh, thank you, Madam Presiding, uh, Presiding Officer, Mr. Dr. Gales, to my fellow councilmen, uh, J. Doctor Lee. Uh, may you congratulate him, uh, applauding, applauding. Uh, Madam Chair, uh, in the past weeks, we are very busy with the agenda, with the idea that there is a public want or public emergency regarding the water prices in the city. Atongasabkan na ang mga panahon na nakahatag kitaong kabalakas sa kubin ko, kumpot na na kitaong tulip sa kubin. Now, in the following week, wala na dayod, no? So, nakita na ako nga, well, I presume na nairegis for danger in the city regarding sa koleksyon na dihangyo sa kubin. Now, daghan na akong pamutan, number one, kung madong galing mo sa radio, rinong sila na akong ang Water District dilip makabayan. Now, the question there, ang Water District bana by intention not to pay the obligations of the kubin? Or ang Water District by operation of law, di sila makabayan? Muna ang mga question na ata'y napagusgutan, ang magtuloy na to, kung pinisay negligence ang mga parte. Now, in the following week, nakahatag ko proposed resolution ang atong city council na nairebago nga, uh, muhatag ko supply ka na to tubig in level, level three, maupinig itawag nga, uh, Rio Verde. But in fact, we know nga ang Rio Verde nakahatag ko supply ng tubig sa kubin, nato sa Water District, arumabot sa atong household. Now, nakita na ako, Madam Chair, na nairegis na kining, uh, Rio Verde. Ano one, gani sa atong proposed resolution, naghangyo kita, na kung charge ang Rio Verde in the amount of fifteen or sixteen pesos in the city here, ano akong pamutan na, Madam Chair? Do'ti kong mahal ang tubig sa Water District? What happened to the Water District? Ako worry because it will lead to insolvency of Caliandioro Water District if you will, regularly will come in. Why? Because you will be to provide water to the Water District. Now, the danger there, Madam Chair, is that ako dikaliukan na sa atong resolution na dihimo na ang Rio Verde kung inadequate ang supply sa kubin na maprobayat sa Water District, sila makasulod. So, the comparison of price, posible nga mas mahal ang Water District, mas barato ang Siobert, it will lead into insolvency of the COWD. Muna, Madam Chair, na nakita na, na delikado kinig pagabot sa panahon. So, posible ang atong tutupan, kung sa'ko natupagsulbat ang problema sa maubayranong sa Water District to kubin. Now, Madam Chair, we all know, kabalotan na ang City Council, we don't have the power to regulate prices, it is under in the National Water Regulatory Board. Now, what if, kung kinin fifteen to sixteen pesos na atong dihangyo, dilipamit sa kubin, or dilipamit, I mean dilipamit sa Rio Verde? Kaya ang National Water Regulatory Board, ang magipos sa regulation prices, is this resolution, and for somebody in the near future, kung dilipamit? Kaya ni As, As I understood, kinin atong dihimong mga resolution, dihimong na for the purpose of public want and public emergency. Na kumpot na kitaong tubig sa kubin, nakita'y maprobayat nga other concessioner, na wala pa manakutol. So, are this, and for somebody mga mga orang magpadayon pa eh? Kaya, tatawag ako, Madam Chair, uh, dilip, patarong, dilip patatawag ako na ano maghimutang ng resolution ngayon ta, dilipot klaro ang regulation. So, muna ako, manifestation, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Rustico Achas, any comment? Okay, uh, uh, I will call first, uh, Councilor Amy, Councilor Gurli, then Councilor Aga. You have the floor, Councilor Amy Moreno.
Madam Chair, mayong hapon, ang mga kaubat sa twenty and city council and to our guests, good afternoon. Madam Chair, I would like to yield to whoever would like to answer the inquiries of Councilor Ian Achas, and later on will view my sentiments, Madam Chair, if that is okay?
Okay, so you want to get the answer from, uh, yeah, the questions asked by Councilor Rustico Achas. So, who's going to answer? In his query, yes, Councilor Madre, you have the floor, leader, Councilor Attorney, Edgar Cabanlas.
I think it would be better if, uh,
I think it would be better if all the questions we raised now, you can answer them.
Yeah, actually, he raises a... So...
So, wala't mga pamunta na.
Okay. Uh, what if we do first with Councillor Achaz, then we cannot repeat the question, the same question to the second speaker, is that okay? Para di namagbalik-balik. So, the first question, Councillor Achaz, you can again stand up so that it will be, uh, you will be answered by the counsel, the Councillor Madjoody Florheder. First question. So, what do you like?
Uh, I think the questions of Councillor Achaz will be raised to the
Yeah.
So, in terms of just answering the question.
Yeah, yeah, that is what...
But I suggest to this, we listen first to all
Ah, okay.
comments.
So, ah, okay, okay. Now, I get it. I get it, I'm sorry. So, you are yielding your question because you wanted the question of Councillor Achaz being answered. So, again, uh, let me call Councillor. So, are you yielding? No more. So, that is the question that you'll answer later, okay. Proceed, Councillor Amy Moreno, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hey, usually, a tendency dilip matupak ang concerns, no, akong pananam. But anyway, Madam Chair, um, same as sa nakita-bos sa special session, I raise the same sentiments, Madam Chair. Um, just to stipulate, eh, the one in question here is Rio Verde. We have approved other concessionaires, no, like J&amp;E Hydro with no question because they have already proven their record, their track record. However, given that Rio Verde has a, has coiled things to have been found out, Madam Chair, that they have, um, irregularities and have been found to be fraudulent, Madam Chair, that is why I am sincerely hoping that, um, by posing an objection, Madam Chair, for this resolution, that we understand or are given more information as to the aspects of their requirements that they should submit to, not to us, the City Council, because wala man ta'ing power, but as due diligence and protection of the City of Cali and the Oro, um, the three main aspects in this application is, one, legalities. Are, is Rio Verde legally bound to any entity, which I believe they are bound by Kubi, which kita sa Council, wala't ay ideas to what their legalities stipulate. But I guess, um, that is one, when it comes to technicalities and also financial capabilities, Madam Chair. So, these are my questions and ikatuhha, again, basing it on the legal issues, section ten of Article Three, the non-debtorment clause, that no loss, no ordinance, no resolution shall be passed that can break or um, impair a contract. And ikatulom, Madam Chair, um, as I had mentioned, I would have easily given, no, um, in no objection so as to provide another option para sa katawan sa Cali and the Oro sa pag-supply sa water. However, the one in question here is Rio Verde, which I hope they can prove to us that they are worth, they have, they also have the capabilities, Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Amy Moreno. Yes, Councillor Guri Balaba, you're next. And Councillor Agasuwam.
Uh, yes, afternoon, uh, Madam Chair. I don't know if this is gonna answer the question of our Madam Minority Leader, Councillor Achaz, no, na he was asking about the putang of Kubi to Kauwi. I think that should be addressed to Kauwi if they are capable to pay their debt. Dilipun taan ang putangan ang Kauwi, ang putangan sa Kubi. Ang ato lang dalhin is, masiguro na to, ang anaa ang tubig mahatag sa katawan. And then, uh, sa iya ikatuhha na provision na only to rate, that is why nga na ra dalhin sa, uh, suming solution number twenty-two-four dash seven oh nine, ato ang ipadilit tatungang provision na fifteen pesos uh, per cubic meter kaya sa attachment, no, sa City Legal Office na opinion na ang NWR, the, um, National Water Regulatory Board lang ang pwede na makahatag only or whatever na ang sa mga, um, rate na napapa, napapanahon o kung sa bang late na, um, putang or ipataw sa ato ang uh, tubig. So, masiguro na siya, no?
Okay. Yes, Councillor, uh, Rustico-Achaz, you have the floor?
Uh, thank Madam Chair, we'd like to comment on Councillor Guri Balaba. Uh, the law says, according to the law, when there is danger, it doesn't say if there is danger. When is not a suspense, it is a suspense for, simply, put pa sa but when it's not matter. When there is danger, kung nalagit ang danger, because we all know, by law, in our constitution, the government and its people is protected by the, uh, pro, protection, protected by our constitution. Now, kung pagpasanatong resolution sa Rio Verde, wala pa maninay tabo, Madam Chair, na naputlanta. Now, talod, ang, imunila sa COWD daw, ano, ang pasyon sa pagbayarin, but remember, water is in view in public interest. Ina rin may paluntakay, public interest. Although, uh, water is owned by public, but pipelines are, you know, uh, a transportation of our roots. So, ang pamunta na talod, in view of public interest, is a made danger between COWD and Kubi. Lalo ni apot sa ina biga kadapo, matatitad, uh, four hundred and sixty, uh, four hundred and sixty, not more or less. Muna'y, Madam Chair, pagkung galing na to, may snow time, lalo mo ang pagmuntahan ng uncertain na ang Rio Verde is uncertain, uh, three years from now, and you take Rio Verde and provide a level three. Because that is a household supply water. Nakasamang pag, matapsa sa COWD, but in fact, COWD has a contract between, uh, between Kubi and Kubi has a contract with Rio Verde. There is a couple of interested contract. You cannot revoke contract agreed by interest party because the contract itself is still covered. That's why na, namuta na, kung sa atong liberty. Now, if ever, na kung sunghin sa Kubi, mapuntan talo't two, is it about violation of the legal rights or abuse of rights of Kubi? Why, wala kayong negligent ang katawan, sa utang sa Water District sa Kubi, ano kita may plan? So, I think Kubi cannot admit putlangtao tubig, kaya na niyo sa sato. It is because we are protected by our laws. So, that's why there's more urgency, Madam Chair, wala pinagkita ngayon, ano, ano niyo? Na, kuwan na ako, kasi barong sa nato niyo, ang atong problema sa Kubi na ako bayarin sa Kubi. So, bat, so bat ako sa, masatisbay ko sa mga mga pamunta.
So, your, your question are, is mubayan na nagligit coming from, uh, COWD. Uh, would you like to answer mo na, then you will have yours, Councillor Haga. Yes, Madjoody Florheder, Councillor
Ah, okay, yeah.
Gerga Cabanas.
Uh, I, I like the, yes, CC.
But that duty was not implied by the COWD. So, in order not to stop or in order not to put the people in jeopardy, this council has approved in previous years similar obligations for other suppliers, other than COWD, to supply water directly to the people. Rio Verde Hydro. There are about four, five. And what was the participation of the city council? The participation of the city council was only to issue the no objection resolution. So, ano na karoon, ano 'yung mga tumpi-kupan, mga napit, who are the official instances of the meeting? This afternoon is the question is, are we going to add another supplier? Or Kanyan Duro? And this is now delivered. If you see no, then you reserve the objection. If you see yes, then you will approve it. That's very simple. Second, karama mapapunta ng about sa legality, technicality, sufficiency, um, sa kanila, ano mga sagot? Pero, you know, I just would like to introduce again the city council's decision. The agreement between Rio Verde and Water District. The original agreement was approved during the administration of Mayor Iman. The agreement between Rio Verde, Kobe, and Water District was approved during the administration of Mayor Morena. And of course, obtinge in the second contract. Kobe, Rio Verde, and Water District, the purpose of this was to correct the error or mistake that was committed with COWD interpreted the contract with Rio Verde. But what happened? Instead of correcting what was wrong in the first contract between Rio Verde and Water District, it compounded the problem. No, niyo may matrato. We were immediately participating in the crafting of that contract between Rio Verde and Water District. We were not part of that contract between Kobe, Rio Verde, and Water District. But we are now the recipient of all these mistakes. These administration, we in this expressistic economy. Solution is one solution. Ma, balaw kita, pagi, kita hindi nakulat sa another resident supplier. Now, if we don't clear any of ma, ma, ma resolution, we will mistake it in our previous resolution that's not late. What is what was our error there? Because when we granted the no objection resolution, we put up a condition. And that condition, meaning fifteen pesos per district, per cubic meter, and sixteen pesos after three years, after meeting, a W. Mano sayo pani, because we are not supposed to do that. Our intention is only to say no objection. Karama map, please, let the Water Board, National Natural Water Resources Board, do its function, do its duty, you know? Kikinis na ang pagtayong minister, kikinis na rin, sila na natatambakan, tabawin, natatambakan. Meron nga din nakasunod ni, pangitan, meron na kabataan ng nila condition. Why? Because if we approve this, Rio Verde will assure us that once Kobe will insist on cutting off the supply of water to Kanyan Duro last April twelve, then Kobe will directly sup- Rio Verde will now directly supply the same volume of water to the Water District. At this one, here in the resolution. So, there was confusion, there was a debate.
So, meaning the Rio is amendable to that price?
Yes, that was their promise.
So, it's their promise?
But we cannot put that here.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but we can recommend, we cannot. Then, I want it very clear that those who are listening now, that they are amendable to fifteen.
But we cannot do that.
Yeah, we cannot, we cannot approve, but we can recommend, so we continue. Because they said that this is a price is okay, the price is okay. Is that true?
So, ilisin natin kaniyo ibutan. Why? So, ano na nga kasi rin roha. Kung managinabu, may order that fifteen pesos lang, toko panandam.
So, kung maputlan kita, klaro nga fifteen, they're amendable to fifteen.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Questions about what's the contract with the mayor? What's the contract? Because I'm afraid it was decided. Precisely, the city will create a task force. And in fact, the city council created also.
A task force?
Not a task force, but an ad hoc committee.
Okay.
Ad hoc committee, the whole.
Okay.
But of course, we fit up for the ad hoc committee, because the mayor has been creating task force. And I have now, in my position, the recommendation of the committee to the mayor.
Okay.
Which includes the analysis, the issue in all this contract between Kobe and Water District and Rio Verde. Now, I have my recommendation that I cannot reverse this recommendation now, because this is subject.
So, we have the contract of Rio Verde and Kobe on the Japan, so we have, you have that already?
We have that, so this will now answer.
The questions.
About uh...
Legalities?
Legalities, ano ikarot sa, kuku sa ta. Are we going to allow them or not?
Okay.
When we have already approved, assuming, private suppliers before. So, I look, I do not even.
Okay, thank you very much, and that was clear, then we know Rio will supply us for fifteen cubic per, fifteen pesos per cubic. Councillor Agasuan and Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, I actually understood the point of our majority floor leader. But my perspective, Madam Chair, is very simple. One of the reasons why we considered Rio Verde to supply water is for the reason that they would provide us with clean and a very affordable water rate. Now, if we try to amend and remove this clause to delete the phrase that the corporation will charge fifteen cubic meter for three years, then not more than sixteen in the succeeding years, now what is our assurance that Rio Verde would give us that low and affordable price? Now, our majority floor leaders said they were amendable and they, that they gave their word or a promise, but if that is not in writing, Madam Chair, then they can easily change their minds. Maybe in the middle of this transaction, they would say the NWRB is giving us a mandate of twenty-five pesos per cubic meter, then we have no choice but to follow it, because that is a mandate of the higher board. My point, Madam Chair, is the assurances. Again, the reason why we consider, the reason why we are attracting new players to our cities, not just to provide water, but affordable, affordable to them. So, by removing this clause, Madam Chair, it is very risky, so to speak. It is very risky to really put our trust into words alone, it has to be put on writing. And now removing this somehow again, as the words of Councillor Hachas, very dangerous and maybe very risky down the road, Madam Chair. That is just my point, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Agasuan, yes, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya, you have the floor.
I try to recollect the meeting. Anyway, I won't justify, I won't attempt to answer the questions raised by the Presiding Officer. But I would like to first one reiterate my position. It has been my stand, can bear the record out from the Presiding Officer, even for the longest time, more than ten years ago. Even when I sat as chair of the Committee of Public Utilities, when I chaired the Committee on Laws and Rules, I like competitions. I like, but I love the competitions.
So, is this competition now?
Yeah, yeah.
It is, it's the same supplier?
It has created a competition by and against the Water District. Remember, for the long time, Madam Presiding Officer, in the nineteen seventies, when COWT was established, it was the only player in Kanyan Duro, and it has come to its operation in full blown, but it did not really produce so well, and there are several complaints. That is why the city council vested with the authority to declare certain companies who would like to enter, based on the decision of the Superior Court, that public utilities like power and water are now open for services coming from any and all with capacity to serve. So, in other words, it cannot be an exclusive franchise. Uh, that is why we allow the J Hydro, we allow the operative to start into a hidden generation of opportunities. We allow, what do you call that in Lumbia? Uh, Yupo, uh, that's a company of competition, though they are small, Madam Presiding Officer. But now, we are on the brink of, of, uh, pa, I would say, losing our faith in Kanyan Duro Water District. We should allow a bulk water supplier to compete against Kanyan Duro Water District. It's just an incidental, perhaps, that there is an existing bulk water supplier which has been supplying Kobe, which has been supplying Kanyan Duro Water District. The Rio Verde, Madam Presiding Officer, with a capacity of one hundred million liters per day production in Councilor General Republicism, in Buginon. Pa, pa, Palas?
Walas?
Walas? Walas, they have been authorized. They have their plant and facility there, Madam Presiding Officer. That is why they are very ready in providing the Kobe and to the El Jose Water District and the households. I don't know if they cannot see the light as regards the capability of this, of this corporation, Madam Presiding Officer. Although there are some questions.
On legalities?
On legalities. But the city council, Madam Presiding Officer, is not prejudiced from, from acting on behalf of the public, which is to decree, to declare, and declare it that the city of Kanyan Duro, on social acceptability, we accept certain company to, to deliver public services. That's our role. The role of the Water District is to provide services and to, to a level three and produce water to the household. And this time.
So, they're out?
No, they are still in competition.
So, COWD is still there?
Yes, Madam Presiding.
And Madam Rio is now the supplier of water?
I would like to think, Madam Presiding Officer, that they are also seeking, uh, Rio Verde to supply them directly if, if, in case there is a failure of a relationship and agreement between the COWT and Kobe. And I would like to think that considering that there is only one bulk water supplier in Kanyan Duro, which is Rio Verde. O, yapon mo supply? Ang ato parang, Madam Presiding Officer, is direct na.
Direct, to preserve.
That is why your condition, Madam Presiding Officer, not to, uh, not to impose more than fifteen or sixteen pesos, they can freely agree. Even when I ask, it's the, you can bear the record out. When I ask engineer Hapitan, Madam Presiding Officer, if, for instance, you are allowed to supply, can you agree to these sixteen pesos and something?
And he said, okay.
And he said, okay. That's on record, Madam Presiding Officer.
That's good.
So, as regards legality, nobody can preclude us by doing our job. Even Kobe, even Water District, it's our role. We accept social legality, tawag, kitong modygikay. Atong role is to, to, to represent the entire social system of Kanyan Duro. So, na social acceptability, muri atong inuwan para presiding officer.
Okay.
Again, I'm not, uh, worrying, worrying against certain accounts on certain issues. Because perhaps there may be truth, but otherwise, let's proceed with our role.
Okay, so it's very clear that Rio Verde is amendable to fifteen per cubic, so that there is a very, very good stand, no? In, uh, at Rio Verde's head, yes, Councillor Roger Abadai? Then I go back to Councillor Ibe and Councillor.
This is in addition to Councillor Ayah's explanation and majority floor leader. I just want to answer and ask questions and the grace of Councillor Aga, Councillor Ian Chastel. Pangitan na, who can predict that Kobe will not cut water supply? Mauunbarato, dayo nila ng red kayang detrit, not yet intended, it tagalaman tak thirty days, after, another thirty days. So, what, ano pa nun, what will come next? Now, our question is, question of Councillor Ayah. Tomanan beginis ang galing saad sa Rio Verde, giving a price or giving what, eh? Now, the question is trust. Remember that several times, the mayor, city mayor has pronounced publicly, he already talked with the owner of the Rio Verde. Na, taksulian na sila. And several times, we heard during the committee meeting, the engineer Hapitan,